I'm going to call this meeting of the Gloucester School Committee to order. And remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners. And I'd like to welcome all of our participants. We have, in addition to the school committee, we have all of our principals here. Tammy Morgan from Plum Cove and Talina Immell from West Parish, James Cook from the high school, Limbidi from the, from the O'Malley Innovation Middle School, Matt Fusco from, from Veterans Memorial, Jody Genoti from Beaman Memorial, and Amy Pastorello from East Gloucester School, as well as Patty Wegman, our special ed director, and Gary Frisk and Greg Bach from the central administration. I, we would, as agreed by the school committee at our last meeting, we're going to meet every week, for now, until the things settle down and we're back in classrooms. Just for the purpose of getting an update, we won't be taking up any other business this evening. This is really just a chance for the principals and the administration to let the school committee know, as well as the public, what's the work that the, the great amount of work that they're doing. I've been witness to a great deal of it. And so, that being said, I will turn it over to Dr. Sapphire.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. I thought that I would just do a couple of quick hits and then talk a little bit about our proposal, since negotiation is, is public. And, and then, as you have said, we have, we have all, most of our administrators here, and they can answer questions, they can certainly speak about some of the things that have been going on in their buildings. Each of the schools have had their most recent faculty meetings yesterday and on Monday, and then we'll take it from there. So, just a couple of quick things. We had a leadership team meeting this afternoon, and a couple of things that we have been talking about. One, because we may be going to some video conferencing platforms, we want to ensure that there are disclaimers, so that confidentiality, the awareness on the part that both the video and audio images of children are across different platforms and other students have access to it. We want to ensure that students and parents understand that there is to be no recording, no use of any of the messaging, that they have to comply with our rules and regulations in the student handbook, along with our acceptable use policy on the internet and our social media policy as well. So, I've been working actually with our special education council, Michael Joyce, and with Naomi, on putting together a disclaimer which we can send out to all of our families, so that they have a clear sense and understanding that with the incorporation of video conferencing, that there are certain security measures, that we will take every precaution, but at the same time, they have to recognize and understand. And if they choose to opt out, well, they are certainly in a position to do that as well. With respect to Chromebook status, we had our kindergarten through grade three come through today, I think it was, and all told, I think we've given out somewhere between 275 and 300 Chromebooks. Some of us made some deliveries today as well to families that were not or could not possibly get over to two Blackburn. There may be a few more of those as well. We've discussed any repair requests and protocols and what needs to be done should there be any, any requests for things related to the, to the Chromebooks as well. What is the role of the principals? What's the role of IT? So, we're working out those procedures. Lunch status. Martha Jo's been quiet, which suggests that things are going quite smoothly. On a good day, when the weather is, is good, she says that they have been doing as many as 300 lunches per day. And of course, when the kids are coming and the families, they're receiving not only the lunch for today, but they're receiving the breakfast for the next day as well. So, everything seems to be going quite well as far as the lunches are concerned. April vacation. As of this morning, the commissioner sent out a notice asking why he should not grant April vacation as school days in order to maintain continuity of learning. There's a, some fast and furious emails going back and forth from superintendents to the commissioner. I have not had a chance to look at them, but the point being that the April vacation is under consideration and discussion as well. MCAS, the, there is legislation, I think I mentioned this last time, giving, granting authority to the commissioner to determine whether to delay, postpone, or what have you. My own opinion is that he has been sort of signaling that if he does indeed get the authority, then he is probably, I would anticipate that he's going to cancel MCAS for this year, but stay tuned. Vendor payments. Gary in particular, I may have mentioned this last time as well, has been sitting in on conference calls, both with the Department of Education and with MasBo, as far as the collaboratives and the like are concerned, and added district transportation, in order to ensure that our children still have placement, and in order to make sure these places still stay afloat, the recommendations that we're receiving from the Department of Ed are to continue our vendor payments, and we have been doing so. Nature's Classroom. I know that there is concern from all of us about end of the year activities and the like, graduation proms and this and that. Our collective sense is that Nature's Classroom is not going to fly this year. The epidemiologists' models are suggesting that the peak will be sometime in mid to late April into May, but there's still a, a curve that could take place. And the notion of taking 250 children and putting them into log cabins out and collectively together, it just doesn't seem to be the safest thing to do at this point, health and safety being what it is. And also, there's the sense that we feel that many families could, could use the refund as quickly as possible, given the circumstances out in society. With respect to teacher evaluations, again, that is by regulation. This is a very disruptive process, obviously. We'll be looking to guidance from the Department of Education as to what their expectations are as far as that is concerned. We also discussed elementary report card and special education progress report distribution. It seems as though that we can expedite those processes by granting our principals more administrative access to our school brains, student information management system. So, we'll be working on that in order to get those done. That, those are the quick hits. That gets us into the upcoming negotiations, which are public, so I don't think that we have any difficulties, just talking in broad strokes as to what we're hoping to do. If you recall, at our last school committee meeting a week ago, Wednesday, we mentioned we were waiting for recommendations from the Department of Education. Those were formally released on Friday. Greg and I have been meeting with some principals, James, Talina, and Lynn in particular, and Patty as well, in order to take the recommendations, our notes, and for some of the more administrative/bureaucratic elements, we've been working with some other MOUs that have been established. And so, we have put together the package which you've had an opportunity to review. It, it refers to school closure and full payments and benefits that are to all members that are subject to the COVID-19 shutdown and who are available for work. Section three talks about remote work expectations. We are looking, as recommended by the Department of Ed, for meaningful and productive learning opportunities through an appropriate structured educational program. We're going to be recommending approximately half the length of a regular school day. In terms of general expectations, we of course expect our members to prepare weekly student work, which would be a combination of both educator-directed learning and student self-directed learning as well. Members, we hope will be available to consult with parents upon request during the normal workday or at another reasonable and mutually agreeable time. We feel that online staff meetings, 60 minutes per week, and it's in a common planning time, or house meeting, or PLCs, department meetings, also should be scheduled throughout the course of each week as well. Everybody's working from a distance, so the whole communication piece is so absolutely key. Teachers being in touch with administrators, being all, via all forms of electronic communication, not the least of which would be even by, by phone as well. Then we roll into some of the special education piece, and we are obligated, we are mandated, regardless of whether we provide any services to the general education population. The governor has issued a mandate, and federal law backs this up, state as well, but we are obligated to meet our special education requirements, which includes the need for virtual IEP meetings, all the necessary documentation, because when schools finally do open, excuse me, we're really going to have to evaluate the extent to which compensatory services will be needed. Speech therapy, physical therapy, deaf and hard of hearing services are expected to share enrichment resources. Our BCBA's, board certified behavior analysts are, are expected to continue reaching out and communicating with our families, including clinicians, school psychologists, school counselors. It's all laid out as to the need for ongoing communication and various modes of providing services. The state is asking us to be flexible and to be creative across the board, and that extends to our special education services. But again, to repeat, we are absolutely obligated to ensure that those special education services are being provided. There's, under section five, there's a definition and scope of remote learning. Remote learning does not only mean online, but the extent to which offline can be made available for our kids. We are working on creating the chain for packets coming in. I've been into the office and there are packets, the machine is usually going quite frequently. We will seek to ensure all online platforms do meet student privacy standards, but we also will probably require a disclaimer, as I mentioned at the very outset. In terms of grading and assessments and progress reports, the recommendation from the state, for a host of reasons, is that it be for credit or non-credit. There are equity issues, there are all sorts of situations and circumstances. We do want to hold our kids as accountable as possible, but we also, it's kind of a, it's a real balancing act, and we have to be aware of the fact that each and every student has a unique type situation. We want to encourage and challenge our kids as much as possible, but we also have to recognize that these are extraordinary circumstances. So, our MOU proposal does reflect what the state is suggesting, which is a credit, no credit system. Obviously, if a member is diagnosed with coronavirus, they need to report to the Director of Human Services. There's some language about leave and people who are on leave and so on and so forth, I won't go through that, but number nine is very, very important, because different teachers have different life circumstances, different pressures, different schedules, they're homeschooling their kids. We understand that it's a very complicated and difficult situation. And what we want to stress is that teachers find ways of working together. It was first suggested a couple of three weeks ago, that grade level teachers, for example, put up the resources and the suggestions that students would have access to. And there is no reason why we cannot continue the same process. If we have a, a teacher who can't quite meet the needs at nine, 9:30, 10 o'clock in the morning, but that person can work either with their fellow grade level teachers or with their fellow subject level teachers, and they can put together materials at night, which then the other teachers can pick up and run with and present, or what have you. If it means because of life circumstance that they need to work asynchronously, and it's a, it's a, it's a collaborative team approach, then we're going to encourage that they follow that. If, if a staff member simply cannot participate, then in accordance with the family's first Coronavirus Response Act, they can ask for a particular leave with a certain amount And actually, the rest is more or less boilerplate types of language for the MOU, acknowledging the, the MOU, acknowledging the public health crisis, noting that circumstances can change very, very quickly. If there's any bargaining unit employee that demonstrates a hardship, but then we'll seek to resolve that on a case-by-case basis, and so on and so forth. So, if anybody has any questions or any comments, the MOU and our upcoming negotiations with the Gloucester Teachers Association this Friday at 2:00, really is the, the next big event that needs to take place, so that we can all get on the same page and do what each and every one of us seeks to do, which is to provide the best basis for continuity of learning for our students that we can.
So, any questions? Laura.
Thank you, Dr. Sapphire. That was very helpful. Just a question on timing. You know, sort of with the assumption that there will be an agreement on Friday, how quickly, realistically, do you think the administration and all the teachers can have things up and running for, for the students?
I would say, quite quickly, our principals have been working on sample-type schedules. They have been meeting with some of their staff in order to run those particular schedules past them. I would say that if there's any holdup, and this is very legitimate, there may be folks who have less experience working electronically in some of the platforms that others are using, all the more reason why teachers need to work together and why we have built-in time during the week for professional development as well.
Melissa. Melissa? Well, Joel, you had a question.
Sorry, I forgot I had to unmute my phone. I had a question about special ed, and I'm not sure if you can answer this, Dr. Sapphire, but have there been any outreach from families to you or to Patty about any difficulty that you know of?
This would be a very good time to bring Patty into the conversation.
Oh, she's here. Okay.
Because she can both speak in detail as to the type of outreach that we are putting into operation, and also provide feedback as to what families may be asking.
Great, thank you.
Sure, thanks, Melissa. So, as I said earlier this week, or was it last week? I'm tending to lose the days of the week.
True.
So, our related service providers, that would be our PTOT, speech and language, teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing, and teacher of the visually impaired, they are, right now, we are in our planning stages to start next week. And I just want to reiterate, regardless of what we're doing in general education, we are required to provide special education services. Our special ed liaisons have been reaching out to parents. Keep in mind, we do in this district have some difficulties reaching out to parents. We might have phone numbers that are not always up to date, you know, also emails, so we do still have some of those barriers of being able to make contact, but people are recording their efforts to reach, reach out to parents. I did reach out to our CPAC president, who sent a list of questions to me. She, those questions really were in regard to some technology issues, and basically, when are things going to start? There were some questions regarding social emotional supports. But we're moving forward. We are in, you know, we are moving forward with our planning, and I would hope that by next week, we have some planning and services right in place for our special needs students, especially our students that have multiple disabilities that are more impacted by the nature of their disability, and really trying to set up a schedule for those kiddos in their homes.
Thank you. Jonathan, I had one more quick question for Dr. Sapphire.
Okay.
Through your conversations or discussions with the Board of Education, do you expect, I mean, I know you heard from them last Friday, do you expect changes to come forward after Friday? Like, in other words, are we going to go in and negotiate some conditions, and then perhaps the state comes out with more regulations that we would have to go back? I mean, do you anticipate that in the, in light of school maybe not being held at all this year, or?
Well, I don't have a crystal ball. I don't have a crystal ball. I think in terms of, I think that the recommendations represent a, represent a stable point in time. They stated that they had worked with the MTA, the AFT, the Mass Association of School Superintendents. We were getting impatient, you were getting impatient, and, and I think that they were, the commissioner was trying to get it right. So, based on that, my, my sense is that we're, we probably have the recommendations that we need to work with going forward as far as the MOU is concerned. It's a crystal ball situation. I'm not confident that May 4th is going to be the end of this, and I don't think I'm alone on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Joel?
Thanks. Just looking for some clarification on the credit, no credit situation, and what impact or consequence there is to being a student who's receiving no credit, you know, for good reason or for no reason.
Right, right. If, if I may, I'd like to, because if anybody's been thinking about this, it's been James Cook, and I'd like to ask if he'd be gracious enough to share some of his thoughts on that?
Sure, Rich. And everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good, all right. So, yeah, so, I'm, one of the, I'll start with the, the commissioner's guidance on this. That also is, like, we really, for a student not to receive credit, we're really going to need to, you know, show that we have reciprocal communication with the family. We are going to need, you know, want to provide students with multiple opportunities to show, to show that they have the skills and, and content for a course. So, so we'll be doing a lot of work to, you know, make sure students have opportunities to earn credit. I believe it was Jonathan who actually, you know, sort of pointed out that issuing no credit at the, at the moment doesn't mean that the student won't have other opportunities through, for example, our credit recovery program, you know, summer school credit recovery, as well as the credit recovery opportunities we provide to students during the school year to recover credit if they receive no credit during this period. So, we were already, you know, working on putting things in place that have to do with the outreach and the access, that have to do with opportunities for students to show sufficient proficiency for credit, and what happens if a student doesn't receive credit now? What are their credit recovery opportunities in place? So, we already kind of lining up those opportunities for kids.
Okay. Again, it was just, my, my concern was, we have a population of students and families who are ambitious and excited and even frustrated about the fact they aren't already back in a learning environment. I suspect there are also students and our families who may not initially comprehend the importance of returning to some form of, of constant education being provided by the district. And, and so I'm trying to think, is this credit, no credit, you know, I saw in some of the literature that came out, was a way to incentivize or to try and, you know, put some emphasis on the importance that these students, the ability that they can, you know, interact with the materials being produced and, and, you know, do the work that's being assigned. And so, just trying to figure out how that's communicated to the communities, make sure that they're not, you know, scared to think, oh no, if my child has a reason they can't participate, they're going to be held back a year. From the flip side, those students who are able to participate have some sort of, you know, obligation to get themselves in front of their device and do the best they can, you know?
Right, so that ends up being, as you say, communication, communicating very clearly in every class, what are the expectations in order to receive credit, right? What are those recommendations, you know, what are those expectations from teachers? That's, needs to be communicated clearly. Also, we're actively making sure that students have access to ways of demonstrating that they have met those requirements for credit. And then, if a student doesn't receive credit, what do we do for credit recovery in that situation? So, I think it's about, you know, as you said, communication, and then working hard as we are now, and continue to work on the access issue. And then, third, what are the opportunities to recover credit? I hope that helps answer the question. Okay.
Yeah, to, just to summarize, there's the access issue, there's the incentivization issue, and then there's the, and then there's equity. It's really messy. Our top flight achievers, hey, you know, just let me go and do the work and get the grade. So, that just makes it that much more difficult, but we need to ensure that, given the, the circumstances in each family, in a time of, I think it's close to being in a crisis, if not already, the credit, no credit provides us with a buffer that prevents us from being discriminatory.
Kathy?
Along that line of, of credit and what requirements the students will have in terms of, you know, what constitutes enough work or the right work to get credit, I assume that will be work that will begin happening, because as it is, we've missed, you know, for the sake of argument, almost three weeks of learning. And we're going to be doing kind of half-days instead of full days. So, the expectation is the kids are not going to get 100% of what they would have gotten, no matter what we do, because we're never going to go double time. So, so who's going to be working with the teachers or the frameworks to figure out what are the important things that kids need to have learned to get the credit?
Well, James or someone else may want to answer that question, but I also want to say that one of the, one of the issues that comes up because of the constraints, which you have just described, one of the questions is, to what extent do we simply go and, and work with information and curriculum that's already been laid out and taught for kids, but do it on a much deeper level versus actually trying to introduce new material? Depending upon the students, the circumstance, situations, it can be, it can be perilous if we introduce new material and we're not able to provide the necessary supportive services, so that every kid can access it as, as well as they should. This is just, we're in a tough, tough buy and tough situation. I don't think as a district that we've answered that question yet, as to what extent we need to move forward. I mean, if you're teaching first graders to read, how do you not move forward? By the same token, if you're teaching the Civil War and you don't want to go further, there are, I'm sure, plenty of things that can spark, hopefully, a kid's imaginations and their higher-order thinking skills by going over more details and more conceptual understandings of the Civil War. So, it's, it's very difficult. We are scaling back because of the amount of time that we can offer, and we have to make decisions and determinations about the extent to which that we are working with curriculum that has already been covered versus the, you know, the, you know, the possibility that we might be able to move forward as well. This is something I think is going to evolve over the coming weeks. This is something I think is going to evolve over the coming weeks.
Thank you.
Jonathan, you're muted, so I think you're giving me permission.
Yes.
I don't think that this is necessarily a question, but more just a comment. Because we're talking about credits, and I know that the underlying issue is more learning. So I think this is going to impact sort of our expectations moving into next year as well, right? Like, I would assume that curriculum is going to have to be tailored because we can't expect that kids are going to be ready to jump in with the normal curriculum for the, for the following year. And I think that that's sort of a much broader, deeper conversation. But I, I'm just curious if those conversations have started.
I would open that up to the principals.
This is Amy. I know in our common planning time this week, coaches are actively checking in on where classroom teachers are, on their pacing chart, if they're where they're expected to be, if they're a little ahead or behind, in order to start gathering that information of what adjustments will have to be made for next year. Even if we do go back May 4th, there's, there's a large chunk that we weren't there. So there's definitely going to have to be some adjustments. The extent of those is yet to be determined.
I can answer at the high school level that those conversations have begun. And those conversations are directly related to the matter Dr. Sapphire was just talking about as well. In, there are areas where there are external assessments that we do need to carefully and strategically move forward on through this April period we're entering. And how far we get with content and skills there will determine where we need to begin next year. So program leaders in the, in the high school are very active in already thinking that through. And that was one of the topics for our, our meeting on Monday this week.
Thank you.
I'll speak to the middle school. I do know that the teachers in there, all of the planning they've been doing right now has been collaborative on their grade level and subject teams. And there have been a number of questions and thoughts put forward specifically to that. So people are thinking as they plan about what the priorities are to teach and trying to think through what's that going to, what that will look like in the fall as kids come back. We know that they won't have had the same curriculum that they would normally have had, and how will we address that? So everyone's thinking about how we will put things together to make sure that there, there aren't gaps moving forward and that we figure out how that transition is going to play out. One of the things that is going to be essential during this time that we move forward, regardless of how long we're out, is incorporating those regular collaboration times into whatever schedule we work with so that people have the opportunity to continue to do that work and make sure that they're planning for priority instruction now and implementing that. And then heading ahead to what that's going to look like forward.
Any other questions?
A question, but Laura, I can go.
Oh. Thanks. I just, so given, you know, all this amazing and really complex planning that's happening, just looking forward just to Friday, I'm wondering, Dr. Sapphire, do you see any, do you see any issues as we go into these negotiations? Well, there's two questions. One, do you see any issues with getting through that sort of smoothly and beginning to operate with that agreement with the teacher so we can move this forward? That's the first question. And secondly, I know that not every district has had a memorandum of understanding before going ahead with, with district-wide class planning. And I'm wondering, from what you understand from other superintendents, sort of, is this a common, is this sort of a, you know, a consistent way or a, you know, the strategic, I don't know what the word is I'm looking for, but is this sort of the standard way to move forward in this case? And do you see any potential roadblocks in that on Friday? Or do you think, you know, we'll all be working together to make sure we get our kids learning again? That was for Dr. Sapphire, but I don't see him on the screen.
Sorry, I'm muted, forgive me. Let me take the second question first. Most districts are sort of in and around where we are. These situations, these conditions are a change of working conditions, and they do require impact bargaining. There may be some exceptional cases where the working relationship between the administration and the union is such that they may have been a very, very smooth transition. I'm not so sure that that's to be expected in most districts because unions want to, you know, protect the rights of their workers. They also want to make sure that their students, you know, are getting a decent education, and they are trying to balance the two. Ultimately, our people, our teachers and the union, these folks are professionals. And they know that, given it being a difficult circumstance, that we may have to iron out a few things and we may, you know, look each other cross-eyed just a little bit. But that's all part of negotiations, you know, without discomfort, without a little bit of pain, nothing moves forward. So I think we can reasonably anticipate that. But at the end of the day, I think all of us want to get it done, and I'm, I'm, I'm optimistic that it will happen.
Thank you.
Samantha?
This is sort of a question for, I guess, Rich, all the principals and Patty. Now that there's sort of going to be more of an expectation for school involvement, starting next week, in theory, what is the protocol if a teacher or a social worker is worried about a child? Right, so if somebody doesn't show up, it's the same thing with school. If someone doesn't show up for multiple days, when do we sort of try to get a pulse on the situation? Just, I'm just curious who has eyes on when there are major no-show and very little interaction from kids and families?
Good, thank you, Matt.
I'd like to jump in on that. So that work's already started at almost all the schools right now. I can speak for veterans. We've already been reaching out to our most vulnerable families. Some of them have gone for phone calls over the last couple of weeks. So that's been ongoing. So usually, you know, I've been talking with my teachers and asking them, oh, what are the kids you're most concerned about? And then we've been following up. So that, that's been ongoing since, since we left on the 13th.
And if you can't, Matt, if you can't get in touch with them, what is, what is the expectation?
Well, I mean, I've already followed up. People that I haven't been able to get in touch with, I've followed up with letters to their houses. We've talked to neighbors. We work with our ELL population. We work with the Massachusetts migrant education program. So they've been actually going to houses and checking on families as well. So we've been pretty successful. We've been able to pretty much get contact with everyone we've been looking for.
Talina wanted to weigh in on this. Talina?
So we've had, again, our vulnerable families are probably saying too much communication. We have, teachers are reaching out to the school adjustment counselor or the psychologist or I and letting us know if they haven't had contact, any of the families with open cases. We let their caseworker know, their phone calls. We have done wellness checks with the assistance of the Gloucester Police Department. So we're really very much on top of that and really trying to make sure all of our kids' basic needs are met. So that's really, social, emotional overall has been really the way teachers are communication with, communicating with their kids or how they are, even if there's an academic bent to it. It's really first and foremost to make sure that they're socially and emotionally okay.
Thank you, Talina. I was really wondering about like the wellness checks. Like, at what point are we sort of asking for a wellness check? So thank you for bringing that up.
Patty wanted to weigh in.
Hi, thank you, Jonathan. So I'm meeting with the school adjustment counselors and the psychologists tomorrow to put together a protocol and some standards of practice. And one of those is, one of the bullet points that we are going to address is what happens when we do have a student that we're very worried about and how we address going back to our building-based emergency teams that would normally function during the school year. So that will be something that we'll be putting together with the school adjustment counselors and the psychologists. And I certainly agree. I mean, we, we have to operate in this, we have the same standards of protecting students when we're, we're not in a building with them as we do when we see them virtually.
Right. Thank you, Patty.
Do you want me to speak to the middle school, Jonathan?
Pardon me?
Want me to speak to the middle school on that?
Please do.
So one of the first things that we did when all of this came about was gather our student services team together to identify which families we knew would need regular check-ins. And we would want to make sure, we have a number of kids who are in challenging circumstances that we wanted to make sure that we knew they were safe and sound, et cetera. So we identified students that we needed to check on. Each of the counselors have checked in on their caseloads along with the special ed liaisons connecting with their students, the gen ed guidance counselors who deal with each with a whole grade, have reached out to all their families. And then, as I said, the other counselors, their caseloads. There's been regular contact, staying in touch. There was one particular family that we knew was homeless, that we were able to track down where the child was and make sure that they had food and care, et cetera. So the staff's really been going over on and above to make sure that we have everybody on our radar and, and we're just keeping contact with what's going on with families. And if anyone new arises, the kids have those contacts with our counselors to use them and try to put similar protocols in place to, to do referral services through Leahy, et cetera, just as we would if we were in school.
Any, anyone else want to?
At the high school, Jonathan?
Sure. Thanks, James.
At the high school, very similar to what others have described. We began with identifying the at-risk students that, you know, are on our radar generally from SST, our student study team, and in other ways that reached out to us with areas of concern. Started there using our counselors, again, as well as liaisons, other support staff, such as Sabrina Giordano with our English learners, and Liz Moran with our Bridge students, and reaching out, making sure we're able to get what we call reciprocal communication, right? We hear something back. And then being very creative, as you heard Matt and others talk about, when we, you know, we didn't find them immediately through regular means. We might get a text number through a friend, neighbor, et cetera. It to be creative on making sure we're reaching all of the kids we're concerned about. And now we're in the process of doing the same thing for all of our students, right? Making sure we have reciprocal communication for everybody, including, you know, an understanding of do all the students have access to what they'll need to be involved in the remote learning going forward.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Any other comments?
I do, I have, I have a comment or just wanted to point out, we've gotten a couple communications on, from parents who are looking for more guidance in terms of how to use the Chromebook, what they should be doing. And I assume, Rich, that you're going to be dealing with those inquiries so that there's a little more clarification for families that look clearly eager to participate but have some logistical questions as we go forward.
Yes, we do need to, to do the outreach and we will prepare. I think we already have those documents. And as I said earlier, if anybody has any questions, it goes to the principal. The principal then sends a notice to the help desk, and then our IT people will reach out to them as well. So I think we will have the chain that's necessary in order to get that information.
Yeah, and I think one of the points we're making is that, you know, I think they see that there's a whole bunch of activities out there but don't quite know where to start. So I think, you know, hopefully what we agree in the memorandum of understanding will help these families and parents who really want to help their children. I assume these are likely parents of younger kids, you know, outside of high school. So, so I think that will help, be helpful for everybody.
Right, just a, just a note about the kindergartners, since they don't normally have accounts, we have to send out the login information, which we have the spreadsheets, we have the data. We distributed them today, and we'll get those logins out to them as well. And I think we can anticipate there to be some questions coming from them as well. If I may, while I'm on that subject, and Greg, you can help me with the name. But we had one of our staff members, her first name is Chantel. We were handing out the Chromebooks today, and she came in to help. She speaks four different languages. Greg, can you help out with that?
Yeah, I just, that, thank you for queuing that up. I wanted to acknowledge Chantal's efforts today. I called her last night, I think, and asked if she would come today for an hour. She ended up coming from 9:30 to 12:00 and had a warm jacket out there outside. And she was meeting and talking with every family who didn't feel most comfortable in English language and had questions. And I saw her out there with a notepad, and she was taking questions and providing information about internet access, how to set up the free com tab, providing the translated materials. And she was wonderful. She just, she just worked for two and a half hours straight. And it would be great if we could have that kind of help all the time. But I really want to thank her for coming out and called today on short notice and, and really doing a great job for a lot of families. So at the end of it, I got a long list of people who, she also asked, would they like a check-in beginning of next week to see how things are going? So I'll be coordinating with Christine Castle, our ELL coordinator. We'll be putting together a master sheet of ELL families and, you know, reaching out and making sure that they are feeling connected and comfortable and, and are able to interact with the curriculum materials that the, the teachers are putting out.
And I'd just like to jump in, her name's Chantal Hackford, and she works at Veterans. She's called just every single ELL family, and that's to check in with them as well.
It's probably, this is James, it's probably worth me giving a shout out at this time to our version, Sabrina Giordano, who's been doing very similar work, calling all of our L students, doing special recorded messages. And we've had a lot of great contact with, with those students this week.
Rich? Yes, I just want to bring up the issue, time marches on, next year is approaching. Registration of new students, particularly kindergartners, is an issue. I'd like to ask Ann Marie Jordan to speak to that just a little bit.
Sorry, I had to unmute. Thank you, Rich. So we were doing a wonderful, splendid job of outreach early and often this year, which is good considering that it has, for the most part, slowed down to a trickle at this point. That being said, Maria Pagliisi has been great. She brought all of the, she's been entering all of our registrations into School Brain. So we do have an accurate count at this point of how many we have registered so far, which I'm not sure if she has all of them in, but I do believe, my last check of the spreadsheet was that there were 80 registrations in. That's low because I think the last few weeks, three weeks, I've gotten at the most three registrations in. I have done some outreach to childcare programs, preschool programs, pathways for children. Unfortunately, their, their, their children aren't there. But I have asked them to email and contact their families, just encouraging them that even though they can't drop off material at Two Blackburn Drive, they can scan an email registration packets to me. They can also put it into the mail as well and send it to us. So there are some, we also do have the city birth list, which we normally, we've already done one mailing to that list. I expect that we'll do another mailing in the next week or two. With all of this getting remote learning up and running, this has been a little bit on the back burner. But I, I can expect that we can do another mailing in about a week or two so that we can get registrations back on track, so.
So as far as applications and the like, Ann Marie, technically, all that stuff can be done online, but it's getting the, the paperwork, the documentation, that's the complicated part, correct?
Correct. So we do have, as you mentioned, Rich, we do have a whole page on the website, which I think it was Grant put a nice link at the very front of the website so that people can go directly to all of the forms. The dilemma is, once they have the forms, they have to physically get it to us, whether it's through email, drop-off, or mailing those forms to us. So that's, that's the dilemma for our fam, and especially for our more at-risk families. They don't have as much access to the ability to scan and email form. So, so that's where our dilemma falls. Hi, Maria.
Maria, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I do. So I've been working on kindergarten registrations here at home. I took the whole pile home with me. I've entered just about all of them. For the people that were missing documents, I emailed them and had them take pictures of them and emailed them back to me. I have a bunch that are ready to go to the schools, but I don't know if anybody's there or if they even want them now. I did see Talina yesterday and dropped hers off in her car. And I do have separate lists for each school of who I've registered and who we're still waiting for. And I can share those with the principals so they can communicate with me on people they know have moved or whatever other information they have on them. And for the people that have siblings, I will probably at some point email the parents and ask them to fill out the packet and email it to either Ann Marie or me so we can get them registered, the people that we, you know, know who they are and can contact them through SchoolBrain.
Talina?
I was just going to say, our secretaries are at home. And if you shared the city list with us, they may be able to call some of those parents for you, Maria and Ann Marie.
Okay, I will share the list.
Well, we'll, we'll want to send out notice to the secretaries in advance, Maria. So let's coordinate together.
Okay.
So they'll know what to expect.
Right.
Is there any other questions or comments? Melissa?
So I'm going to be a pain and bring this up again. Prom and graduation, when will we make a decision about what we're going to do about that? Are we going to wait until after May 4th? Or?
Yes, yes. Because you don't want to, I mean, if it's on me, you don't want to ask me now.
Okay.
I think we should see what happens after May 4th.
Okay. There's just, there's a lot of talk of parents, of course, you know, that have their seniors and more so about the prom and just trying to figure it out. So I just don't want to lose sight of it.
Yeah, understood. If we're still in the middle of a pandemic, let's each ask ourselves, what would we do? Right?
Well, I, I guess the question is, are we going to consider just letting them have it, have a graduation or a prom on a different date as opposed to canceling it? That's, that's probably the question.
I think that's, I think that's a no-brainer. I mean, if, if people are willing, especially graduation, if people are willing to wait into August even, or what have you. No reason in the summer months why we can't organize a nice graduation celebration.
Right. I mean, I, I know you, I'm sorry, I know you said it's a no-brainer, but believe it or not, people are questioning. So I think if we get that message out, that it will be rescheduled. We just don't know when or how. I think that'll ease a lot of minds.
Yep. James, can we talk about that, like tomorrow?
Absolutely, yeah. My thinking is right, right along the lines of what you, what you just said. Is we, these are things we want to provide opportunities for. And just had the conversation today about, you know, making sure we're prepared for, for all of these things for our seniors when we're able to do them.
Joel?
My only, I know we have to have this meeting over soon because Conservation Commission has to get started. My only addition to that would be coming to the decision about prom because I talked to Tracy Lowther, is if I were you guys, to figure out when the deadline is to put the rest of the money down if they haven't already paid the Dammersport Yacht Club. And obviously, you don't want them to be putting non-refundable money down in addition. I'm sorry about the dogs. And if that can be avoided. So I'd probably check in with Tracy to figure out when that deadline is and what we need to figure out before that deadline.
Okay, any other questions? I, I'm not sure that we're restricted by time because I, I believe that Grant is here and he will, he will take over if.
You are absolutely restricted by time. Sorry to interrupt at this moment where you're all in one room, basically. And that we, so we have a hard stop at a meeting that has to start at 6:30. So, sorry about that.
Okay, all right. So we have a few more minutes.
I know you can't see me, but this is mayor taken.
Yes.
We're in a state of emergency. Any money that is issued to a place that can't open because of state or emergency has a choice of either getting their money refunded or they could postpone it to a different date. There are some students who say, okay, so maybe I don't, I was never going to plan on doing the whole thing of graduation. Will I be, still be able to get my diploma when it's supposed to be due? Can I just get it, you know, via email or whatever? So those are people that might not want to because they have other plans. There's people in the summer that might want to go away. But the, and I said to everyone, if people are willing, you know, and, and they can't go up to Dammersport and they, you know, their prom and they want this and stuff. There are so many parents who have reached out and said, you know, we'll give it to them. These kids deserve it, especially being in for all this time. And if they want that and that's their senior thing, the only thing we can't replace is the games and the sports and everything else. But you know what, we could give them a prom if they wanted. You can give them graduation if they wanted to. There's plenty of things we can. But rest assured that any money that goes to any facility because we're under a state of emergency has to be refunded or they have to give you, say, another date if you'd like, just so you know.
Thank you. Okay, any, any other comments or questions before we move to adjourn? Do you have your hand up, Melissa? Or is that, oh, that's just something on your desk? All right, anyone else? I'd just like to thank everybody and particularly all the principals and administrators for all the, all the work that I know and I see every day that is getting done. And with any, we, and as well as all the teachers who are pitching in and, and trying to do the best thing they can for all of our students. What we need now is to get some clarity and some, some unified messaging out there as to how we, what we're doing and, and how it's to be done. So hopefully we'll get that resolved this week and next week we'll be all up and running. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Can I just say, I just wanted to put out a reminder that there is a personnel subcommittee meeting tomorrow at 4:30 with Dorothy Presler, for those that are interested.
Right. I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second, we need a roll call vote, Maria.
Joel?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Sophia?
Yes, I'm making dinner if anyone wants to do a drive-by.
I'm coming.
Okay.
Samantha? Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
And Kathy says yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot Kathy.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.